Call the order, the Board of County Commissioners' regular meeting for February 18th, 2016. Welcome, everybody. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance and salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I salute the flag of the state of New Mexico with the symbol of our friendship and loyalty to God.
You start off the wrong flag. Out of practice. Okay, first item on the agenda is to approve the meeting agenda. Are there any changes need to come?
Mr. Chairman, just to add county reports in with the item with Commissioner reports, other than not no changes.
Want you to take a second.
Oh, yes, there it is. Sorry. Need to remove item, item M and item F. Margaret Baguette could not be here today to give her surveillance program update and after a meeting yesterday, we have some revisions to make to the policy for item M and we'll move that to the March meeting. Check on the staff on the changes.
Can I get a motion to approve amendment?
Second.
All those in favor, send five saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. So we'll stand for public input. During this portion of our meeting, we welcome your suggestions and want to hear your concerns. This is not a question and answer period. Speakers will be limited to five minutes. Any individual who would like to discuss an item in more depth may request to be placed on a future agenda. Request forms are available in the County Manager's Office. Is there anybody here for public input today? Seeing none, we'll move on. We have a public hearing today for consideration of ordinance number 1602, discussion regarding the adoption of ordinance 1602 entitled Loma Verde Estates Subdivision Community Area Improvement District Assessment Levy Ordinance. Is there anybody that would like to speak during this public hearing on the consideration of ordinance number 1602? Seeing none.
Can I do that? Absolutely.
Is this our last step?
This is it. So we will start construction soon? Do you know more or less when we're on the schedule? I've been asked that all through Walmart and all through the county.
I've had several phone calls on it too. I guess whenever Abby calls me and tells me we're ready to go. Well, my plan is we probably will be able to finish it all in one lap. What I want to do is go in there and get them a road built in there so they can get in and out and then we might have to pull off for the Rosedale Road project.
And your request was at least just to blade it a little bit?
Yeah, yeah, that will be done. Like I said, I'd like to get them a road put in there, then we might have to pull off and then go back and finish it, but we will get them a road.
I have to be patient with them. I know they have been. It's been a while. I know these assessments take long, but appreciate your role.
Okay.
I'll double check stat you, but I think it says 60 days, doesn't it? I think we're supposed to start in 60 days.
Come today.
But you can finish whenever?
Okay. Exactly.
Yeah, I don't think that's really where we want to go.
Well, if we can get a blade, I know they had a few emergencies out there with some elderly folks and ambulance really hard for them to get in and out of there, but do what you can, appreciate it.
Yeah, like I said, as soon as Abby says we're good to go, we don't have to wait that 60 days out. She says we're good to go, we're not planning on jumping in there.
Great.
All right. Anything else?
Sure, thank you.
All right, then we'll move on to approve or disapprove ordinance number 1602 as described above. Can I get a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion, we approve ordinance 016-02 as described above.
Second. A motion of proper second to approve ordinance 01602. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Minutes, approve or disapprove, January 14th, regular meeting minutes.
Motion to approve, January 14th, 2016, regular meeting minutes.
Second. It's a motion of second to approve, January 14th, 2016, regular meeting minutes. Is there any discussion needs to come on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Natural reports, approve or disapprove, February 15th, 2016, expenditure report. Linda, can you go over the expenditure report please for us?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you, and members of the board. You have an expenditure report for approval for a total of $2,827,871.16, and this is for AP checks. Included in that amount is a check to O'Hannon Houston Incorporated, and this is for the airport runway design. It's for $45,066.72. A check to the High Desert Humane Society, this is for October and December from Animal Control Services in the amount of $15,815. A check to Wright Express Fleet Services for December fuel in the amount of $19,828.24. A check to Stoven Construction in the amount of $70,803.86 for the December 2015 payment for the conference center remodel project. A check to HCP Systems Incorporated, and this is for January and February Medical Management Nursing Services in the amount of $44,304.90. A check to the Mexico County Insurance Authority, and this is for the 2016 multi-line and law enforcement contributions for the amount of $629,258. This is a check to Crimson Fire Incorporated in the amount of $245,756. This is for two wildland brush trucks for the upper man rest fire department. A check to Architecture Workshop, and this is a project billing for the continuum of care facility and the conference center remodel in the amount of $50,195. Check to Ridge Ford in the amount of $20,623, and this is for a 2016 Ford F-150 truck for the world department. And a check to Stomach Gaining Company, and this is for their final billing for the fiscal year 25 auditing services in the amount of $18,702. And also included in this packet is a payroll checks for pay period number 26, pay period number two, pay period number three, and pay period number four, payroll total of $433,709.91. So the sum of expenditures that you are approving is $3,326,261. Let me repeat that.
Thank you very much, Linda.
Thank you.
Anybody have questions on the expenditure report? Can I get a motion then?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion, we approve the February 15th, 2016 expenditure report.
It's a motion of proper second to approve the February 15th, 2016 expenditure report. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Linda, will you be doing the quarterly report? Okay, go ahead.
Okay, the quarterly report, which ends December 31st to 2015, I'll begin with the general fund. We had a beginning cash balance at July 1, 2015, of $2,721,513, and as of December 31st, we received $3,949,265 in revenue. We've had transfers to date going out of $1,411,970, and expenditures to date of $4,190,853, leaving us an ending balance at the end of December 31st of $1,67,955, with a cash reserve of $1,047,713. The road department, we had a beginning cash balance of $435,589, revenues to date of $375,398, and transfers to date going into the road department of $181,782, and expenditures to date of $752,558, leaving us with the ending balance at December 31st of $240,211, with the cash reserve of $177,498. In the general fund, we had a beginning cash balance of $123,146, revenues to date of $291,379, transfers to date going into the correction fund, $750,70, and expenditures to date of $1,219,887, leaving us with an ending cash balance of a negative $55,292, which we still have the other half transfer to go in, which will take place in May.
Thank you, Linda. Is there any questions on the expenditure reports? You guys notice that we only report on the three big funds. All the rest of them are pretty insignificant in the scheme of things, so there's nothing to approve on that because it's an audited number, so we will move on to I and item D. Approve or disapprove proclamation declaring April 4th through April 10th as Grant County Seed Library Week. Is there somebody here for Seed Library Week? No? Okay. Then I guess we can just approve the proclamation.
Sir, I'd like to make a motion to approve proclamation declaring April the 4th through April the 10th, 2016, as Grant County Seed Library Week.
Second. There's a motion and a second to approve April 4th through April 10th as Grant County Seed Library Week. Is there any discussion? I guess I was just hoping somebody would tell me what Seed Library Week was, but anyway. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Request for funding assistance from SNAP of Grant County for pet spay or neuter program, Ms. Lee. Good morning, how are you? You might have to turn on the mic. Is the red light on?
No.
There you go.
Good morning, my name is Candace Brainly, and I am the president of SNAP of Grant County. We help low-income folks spay and neuter their companion animals. We've also branched out into helping people in Hidalgo and Catron County as well. I put a packet at each of the commissioners' seats that has some information about us. We're a very small organization, we're a 501(c)(3). We've been in existence in the county since 2002. We do not duplicate what Halt a Litter is doing, that's a big concern of a lot of people. We complement it. We're in complete agreement with the folks at the High Desert Humane Society, and I listen to the amount that you're paying out for animal control with your contract with High Desert, and SNAP with the reduction of unwanted pets would help eliminate the need for so many services through the animal shelter. In fact, Heidi Ogas told me when I was talking to her that between SNAP and Halt a Litter, we've helped reduce the intake at the shelter by 40 percent. There, I gave you a chart of how many animals we've helped spay and neuter in the county. We've, in Grant County alone, we did 220 for the year. We did 190 in Grant County, 77 of them outside of Silver City in the county. We've already had 11 people sign up in January and February outside of Silver in the county to use our services to help spay and neuter their pets. The difference between Halt a Litter and SNAP is the cost to the people. Halt a Litter is a wonderful program, and I use it myself. I'm a retired school teacher, and I can't afford to spay and neuter every stray animal that my husband and I manage to drag home, which we do. Example, my husband found a chihuahua running loose in downtown back about seven months ago, and he was not neutered. We could not find his owner, so we now are the proud owners of this little guy. Through Halt a Litter, it cost us $37.50 to get him neutered, which is very reasonable. $37.50 to neuter a male chihuahua.
Thank you.
If we had qualified for SNAP, it would have cost us $20. So that's, it's not a lot in the scheme of things, but when you're living on SSI or disability or a full-time student at the university, it makes a huge difference, and we have people tell us that they're really happy for our services. We have very low overhead. We do it out of our homes. The phone numbers on the cards are people's, one of my home phone number and two other people that do it, one in the county out in the member base and another person here in town. Our overhead last year was only 1.2 percent. We were asked, and the reason I'm here before you is in talking to SNAP and crews and the deming animal advocates and other organizations like us in the state, they said that they get support from the county and the city in which they reside, and I know in the past, past presidents have, I think, have come before you and asked for money, and I know that in the recent past, we haven't, and we're asking for a very minimal amount. We're asking if you would fund us $2,000 a year as a recurring, you know, amount, and that way we can, we can reach more people and reduce the overpopulation. We have double the euthanasia rate in this part of the country or in this part of the state as the national average, and it's, it's not acceptable. I've showed you, I've given you the High Desert Humane Society fact sheet from 98 to 2015, and the euthanasia rates have gone down dramatically, but still, 365 dogs and 408 cats last year is still not an acceptable number, even though it's down from the thousands. So I'm, we'd like to expand, we'd like to reach more people, and we feel we're a really important program for the county and the community, and we hope you consider our requests. Do you have any questions as to?
I don't think I've ever seen a pyramid graph as you have given us. It's quite unique, it's made up of dogs and cats, so that's pretty neat.
Amazing, what an unspayed and neutered dog and cat will produce over time.
And it looks like you left, whited out maybe one on the left-hand side of the dogs. I wonder, I came up with that. I don't know, it's just a comment.
Where on the?
Right there. You got them whited out. Just a comment. Don't worry about things I say, all right?
Okay, I'm not seeing where some things whited out, though.
Yeah, I'll show you later.
Okay.
It doesn't impact anything. Don't run off. Don't run off.
Did you have?
No.
Okay. I got a couple of questions.
Okay.
It says here that the town of Silver City has signed on to help. What is their contribution?
Well, being real new to this, I just went and met with Mr. Brown and asked him for $1,000, and he readily agreed, and the check is happening next month. I now realize that was too easy, and I should have asked for more. And we're waiting until after the election, which is going to be happening next month, to approach the council to ask them to give us a yearly amount at a recurring rate. So that was my first foray into asking, you know, any entities to give.
Always ask for more than you need.
I know.
Because we're always going to cut it.
Anyway, so, but we decided that we will go before the town council once the new counselors and mayor are in place and ask for more.
And if you were willing to take some advice, I would also ask you to go to the smaller municipalities, and I realize that they don't have the wherewithal of Silver City or Grant County.
I have approached there, I gave them a packet of information yesterday. Their meeting is next week. I've sent up requests to Hidalgo County, and I'm going to get one in the mail to Catron County. I've talked with Hurley, I talked with Archie, who runs the shelter out there, and they are so straight out that I said, you know what, I'm going to let you, because their little animal control, their little animal shelter, uses SNAP to help them spay and neuter the pets that they get, and that's how poor they are, and I said, you know what, I'm going to let you hit the Hurley municipality up for what you can get, because like I said, they're using SNAP to help them spay and neuter the animals in their shelters, so. But yes, I am, we're going to everybody hat in hand.
It's the proper time to ask for money because we are fixing to go into budget in the next month, and we will make sure this is a part of the conversation at least.
Well, thank you. And seeing, I learned because last year I went to everybody right when, at the end of the fiscal year, and everybody went, ah, you should have seen it, I talked to us back in January, so it's February, but here I am.
There you go. Thank you very much.
Anything else?
No, ma'am, I didn't have anything else. Next item on the agenda is the recognition for the core team for the CWPP. That would be Mr. Villa. Good morning, Mr. Villa.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. It's really the CWP Plan of the County Wildfire Protection Plan was done in last year, 2015. It was updated from 2009. So what we want to do here, just talking with everybody on this core team, is follow the agencies that have a stake in the CWP Plan, and so we just want to make sure that we can continue to go forward as a living document so that we can continue to meet and update the CWP Plan annually. So it's just recognizing us so that we can start meeting probably quarterly, and then every year put out a report and update the plan.
So do we need to do something to recognize you?
Well, I just wanted to make sure that the county would recognize. I mean, I didn't know if we had to go to resolution or not. I don't think that's necessary at this point, but if we do, then I'll come back to the commission for that. But I know working with the Eco Watershed Group, a lot of those people from these agencies are on that as well, and so we've been discussing how we go forward with it. But I just want the county to recognize that there is a core team working on the CWP.
For the audience, could you explain what core, the core team that?
It's the gathering of all the stakeholders, including the public, that will come together and gather information as far as fuel projects. Some of the Forest Service will do some prescribed burning. State Forestry has grant programs that they get with the public that are adjacent to their lands to help them reduce some of the fuel. State Land Office, it's just all the stakeholders that have a piece in property in Grant County, and we want to make sure, including the public, because there are public private owners that do use some of the grant money either to BLM or State Forestry to help in some of their properties. There's been a lot of projects up in the PA area, there's been some projects in the borough rounds, we're looking to do a burn Forest Service for bear. So those kind of things, so that we gather, so those are updated consistently on an annual basis within this plan, so the public can see what we're doing as agencies. And Grant County, obviously, because it's our community, will just take in the lead on that.
Just in a minute, I'll just make a simple motion. So I move that Grant County, the US Forest Service, the New Mexico State Forestry, the BLM, State Land Office, and the Silver City Fire Department are recognized as the core team of the Community Wildfire Protection Plan. All those in favor, signify by aye. Aye. Motion passes. How's that?
I just wanted to thank Randy for all this work. You know, we do meet with all these entities already with the Eco Watershed Group, and they discuss a lot of these issues at that, at those meetings, and, you know, no one knows how much work Randy actually puts into this, so we thank you very much. You and Ralph Pope have done a really good job, and we thank you for everything you do.
Motion is really important.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Ramos and Commissioner Hall, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Okay, moving on to item H. Approve or disapprove Pinas Altus Volunteer Fire Department, the PERA qualification report in record form?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion, we approve the Pinas Altus Volunteer Fire Department PERA qualification report in record form.
Second. There's a motion and a second to approve the Pinas Altus Volunteer Fire Department PERA qualification report in record form. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Approve or disapprove the Pinas Altus Volunteer Fire Department PERA annual reporting form?
Would you approve the Pinas Altus Volunteer Fire Department PERA annual reporting form?
Second. There's a motion and a proper second to approve the Pinas Altus Volunteer Fire Department PERA annual reporting form. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Approve or disapprove the Grant County Distribution Funding Application for the Local DWI Grant Program?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion, we approve the grant distribution funding application for the local DWI grant program.
Second. It's a motion and a second to approve the grant distribution funding and application for the local DWI grant program. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Approve or disapprove the updated Grant County Detention Center inmate orientation booklet? Do you guys want to talk about that at all?
I have a discussion, I have a question, I wish you would may I?
You can do it now, if you want.
Yes, Mr. Carrillo, this is basically, I looked at those and I didn't see any change from the last time. Is this, you wish to do it annually, and that's what it is?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Hall, what we did is we, from the previous one that we had, we just did some updates to it. We took some, some other policies from other counties that were accredited. We essentially just did an update. We needed to have an inmate, we needed to have this policy, and we need to have an inmate booklet. We had something on paper, but now we actually have something that we can give to the inmates whenever they come in to booking, and it also was part of the grievance process for the inmates, so it was something that we're upgrading in the policies and our procedures, and this is something that we did, we just added some content to what we had before.
Yeah, I would probably say no, but yeah, it would help the commissioners if in fact you underline and do some kind of indication that this is something new or whatever, so that they can compare and see what the situation was, or mark out or whatever, okay?
Yeah.
I know, not going to affect me again, but it would affect, I think, the future commissioners.
I'll do this.
I think probably the inmate booklet is going to be a working.
Working document?
Yeah, because we're, we just update things that we, you know, the laws are always changing, and we have more regulations, and probably the biggest changes in this one is that we expanded our disciplinary process to give them more information in there. But you may see it before you're gone.
Oh, no.
Not that you're leaving.
I don't agree.
But it's probably just going to keep coming in front of you, because we'll keep updating.
We don't have to read the whole thing, we can see, we already understand what the other one, I had to pull the other one.
I have a red line copy if you want.
Yeah, all right. Thank you.
Yeah, we should have one that's highlighted, red line, if we have changes from here on that. Okay, any other, anything else? Okay, can I get a motion?
Motion to approve the updated Grant County Detention Center inmate orientation booklet?
Can I second? A motion and a second to approve the updated Grant County Detention Center inmate orientation booklet. Is there any discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. L. Approve or disapprove updated Grant County Detention Center's policies and procedures, inmate grievance? Abby, have anything to add to that, or?
I didn't have any time to do the change in it.
Sure.
Actually, it's just, we updated it because we added a step that our healthcare provider, our in-house healthcare provider also has a grievance step that inmates can grieve a medical issue directly to them, so we added that into our grievance process, and so it just says that first you grieve your medical issue to HCP, our healthcare provider, and then after that, they get an opportunity to grieve it through Grant County. So that was the only change.
Can I get a motion?
Chairman, I'd like to make the motion, we approve the updated Grant County Detention Center's policies and procedures, inmate grievance procedure.
Second. There's a motion and a second to approve the updated Grant County Detention Center's policies and procedures, inmate grievance procedure. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. No M, so we will move to N. Contracts and agreements. Approve or disapprove agreement number A1604. This is an agreement between HME Incorporated and Tyrone Volunteer Fire Department to purchase a Model 18 engine.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to have, this is subject to approval of the NMFA board that meets later this month, so we were trying to save them some time because the quotes expired, so this would be subject to NMFA approval before we would sign the agreement.
Motion to approve agreement A1604.
Motion to approve Agreement A-1604, of course, with the stipulation that this is subject to the NMFA Board.
Second. There's a motion, a second to approve A-1604 with NMFA Board approval. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify, say an aye. Aye. Motion passes. Approve or Disapprove Agreement Number A-1605. Assurances and Cooperative Agreement Between the Grant County DWI Program and the New Mexico Department of Health.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion that we approve Agreement A-16-05.
Second. There's a motion, a second to approve A-1605. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify, say an aye. Aye. Motion passes. Approve or Disapprove Agreement Number A-1606. A Memorandum of Understanding Between the Grant County DWI Program and the New Mexico Department of Finance and Administration, Local Government Division.
Motion to approve Agreement A-1606.
Second. There's a proper motion, a second to approve A-1606. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify, say an aye. Aye. Motion passes. Approve or Disapprove an Agreement, this is A-1607, a Memorandum of Understanding of Agreement Between Freeport McMoran Designating Certain Emergency Vehicles as Authorized Emergency Vehicles pursuant to NMSA 1978 667-6. Charlie, can you tell me about this one, though?
This was, I'll probably let Abby elaborate, but to summarize it, Freeport requested Grant County to designate certain fire engines and ambulances that they own as recognized emergency vehicles, so that they would be able to use those to transport from the mines to the hospital. After Abby's research, we only agreed to include the ambulances. This would include four ambulances at Chino, four at Tyrone, that would allow them to be recognized by state statute as an authorized emergency vehicle.
So is there any transport all the way, because I know for years they met somewhere and traded, and that didn't make sense to me, but.
Yeah, it seems like it's really going to be actually helpful to Grant County, and, you know, it's possible they have some regulations they have to follow, that they have to have on-site emergency vehicles, but I think this will work out well for both of us.
You haven't got just regular vehicles running down the road without any kind of emergency lights on them, right, Karen? That's not a good thing to do.
Okay, can I get a motion? All right, I'm starting Q.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion that we approve the Agreement A-16-7.
Second. There's a motion, a second to approve A-1607. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify, say an aye. Aye. Motion passes. Approve or Disapprove Agreement Number A-1608. This is a modification to 006 to Cooperative Law Enforcement Agreement Number 12-L-E-11030600-002. Annual Operating Plan and Financial Plan Between the United States Department of Agriculture and the Grant County Sheriff's Department. This is our little cooperative agreement between Forest Service and us every year, and this year they provide us solid $20,000.
Motion to approve Agreement A-1608.
Second. There's a motion, a second to approve A-1608. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify, say an aye. Aye. Motion passes. Approve or Disapprove of Agreement A-1609, an Agreement Between ASA Architects in Grant County for the Electrical Renovations at the Grant County Courthouse.
This is an agreement between Linco Electric and Grant County to provide the electrical renovations at the courthouse. Their bid was $118,977, that excludes the IT.
It's not ASA, it's Linco.
Right. So this is to, we approve this agreement, we can move forward with those electrical upgrades.
Chairman, I'd like to make the motion that we approve Agreement A-16-09.
Has it been?
Has it been?
Second. There's a motion, in a proper second, to approve Agreement Number A-1609 with Linco Electric for the electrical renovations at the Grant County Courthouse. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify, say an aye. Aye. Motion passes. Item T. Approve or Disapprove Bid IFBB-1509, Grant County Road Department Roof Replacement.
We received two bids for the Road Department Roof Replacement. The low bid coming from Mastercraft of Silver City in the amount of $131,760. A second bid coming from Sacotone Construction of Silver City in the amount of $194,000. We have $125,000 capital outlay appropriation. So this bid was to do the entire roof. We thought that we would have to do this in phases, but this bid is for the entire roof, so we have some other funds that we can transfer in to be able to complete the entire roof. So we would recommend approval of Mastercraft Metals.
Chairman, I'd like to make the motion that we approve the bid for Mastercraft Metals, IFBB-1509.
Second. There's a motion, a proper second, to approve the bid of Mastercraft Metals for B-1509. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify, say an aye. Aye. Motion passes.
Glad we actually have another local with our money.
Both of them are kind of local.
Yeah.
Approve or Disapprove Bid B-1510, Healer Regional Medical Center Discovery, NM630 Nuclear Imaging System.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, we briefly, Brian and I talked to you about this. They received some capital outlay that ended up being bundled through the county, so we had to release the bid to purchase that's a nuclear camera for their radiology department. And there was one bidder of GE, I think it's GE Medical, Healthcare or something like that, anyway. So one sole bidder in the amount of $357,311.37. We do have a letter from Healer Regional accepting that bid and recommending your approval of that, and Ashley Burko says here if you happen to have any questions for her in regards to what it is.
Anybody have any questions on what a nuclear imaging system?
GE, that's one bid. It's several components that.
Motion to approve a bid IFBB-B-15-10.
Second. There's a motion, a second to approve B-1510. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify, say an aye. Aye. Motion passes. B. Approve or Disapprove Resolution R-1608, Notice of Intent to Consider and Ordinance Amending the Dedication of a Local Auction Gross Receipts Tax. It seems like this has been on there since, like, last November, but Abby's been exploring why it's here again.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We, this is exactly the same resolution that you previously approved, the notice of intent to publish or to consider an ordinance to change the dedication of the gross receipts tax. And then at the next meeting, you also see the ordinance again. And the reason we're doing it again is because we missed a step. After you approved this resolution, the next step is that we publish notice to the public that you're going to consider it. We missed that step. So I just want to go back and start over, make sure we do everything exactly like we're supposed to do it, so that it can't be questioned later. And we'll still be in time to have it in effect, even July.
Okay.
So I'm just dotting i's across the t's.
It's just like being in high school again, you have a principal, it's always getting called to the office if you did something wrong, so. Okay, can I get a motion to approve R-1608?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion we approve Resolution R-16-08.
Second. There's a motion, a second to approve Resolution R-1608. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify, say an aye. Aye. Déjà vu all over again. Okay, item W. Approve or Disapprove Resolution R-1609, a Resolution Authorizing the Submission of a New Mexico Community Development Block Program Application to the Department of Finance and Administration. Charlie, you want to go over that?
Mr. Chairman, this is an application for CDBG Economic Development Set Aside Funds in the amount of $500,000 to assist with the construction of the Tucasa Substance Abuse Treatment Facility. What this resolution does is it authorizes, the CDBG program requires that the chief elected official of the local government entity be the person authorized to submit documents, sign documents. So what this does is it allows us to submit the application, and it designates the chairman as that chief elected official to sign all documents.
Motion to approve. Second. Resolution R-1609.
You kind of like that.
I love it. Long time comes. Okay. There's a motion, a second to approve R-1609. Is there any discussion on that motion? All those in favor, signify, say an aye. Aye. Motion passes unanimously. If I'd have got to that a little sooner, we'd have made you sweat. Approve or Disapprove Resolution R-1610, a Resolution Authorizing the County Submit an Application to the Department of Finance and Administration, Local Government Division to Participate in the Local DWI Grant and Distribution Program.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion that we approve Resolution R-16-10.
Second. Excuse me. You're about to lose it, aren't you?
Yeah.
Perhaps he's so lucky.
That's right.
There's a motion, a proper second, to approve R-1610. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify, say an aye. Aye. You can just use hand gestures if you need to, over there. All right. Approve or Disapprove Resolution R-1611. This is a budget adjustment. You want to go over that? You want Linda to? Okay.
Members of the commission and members of the board, we have Resolution R-1611. This is for several budget adjustments to our current fiscal year budget. The first one being that there's an increase in revenue to the copper production. This is in addition to what was approved through DFF in our final budget. We're increasing it by $316,670. We have, excuse me, a revenue increase and an expenditure increase of $15,300. This is for the 2015 Homeland Security Equipment Grant. We have an intra-budget transfer of revenue and expenses in the amount of $17,040, and this is for the Senior Services 2016 Transportation Grant and their 2016 Home Delivery Grant. All we're doing is switching the money from one to another. We have a budget increase for the clerk's office for the county clerk equipment, for the purchase and capital outlay expenses, increasing it by $95,000. We have a revenue increase and an expenditure increase in the amount of $207,631, and this is for the Ramon Verde Assessment District Fund that we received from the finance authority. Then we have a revenue increase and an expenditure increase of $125,000, and this is for the capital outlay appropriations for the Road Department Repair Room Set of Facility at the Road Department. So the grand total revenue increase is $664,601, and the expenditure increase total is $442,931.
Thank you, Linda. So what on earth is a clerk's office buying for $95,000?
Purchases. We had to send out new cards. I'm walking this year, remember? No, but we're sending out new cards, you know, that we're taking that money out of there, and then also purchasing a new vehicle for the office. I don't, you know, I don't think the new clerk's going to appreciate driving their truck around town to deliver machines. I don't mind, but I think it's time for the office to have one, you know, for the new clerk to come in, and we have that situation under control. We don't use the Public Works Department as much anymore to do that, just because the machines cost so much, and I think the clerk's office needs to take responsibility for those machines and not let anybody else handle them, so I think that truck will do us some good in the coming years to come.
Well, I'd like to just make a comment that, I mean, every year it seems like you cut your budget, and I think we're surprised that you're going to actually spend some money this year. But no, I agree with you, clerk's office probably does need that vehicle.
That was our fault.
Yeah, that's right.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution R-1611.
Second. There's a motion, a proper second to approve Resolution R-1611. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify, say an aye. Motion passes. Approve or Disapprove Resolution R-1612, Resolution Designating a Representative and an Alternate to Represent Grant County, the New Mexico CAP Entity pursuant to the New Mexico CAP Entity Joint Powers Agreement. Assume this is coming before us because, congratulations or condolences to our county planner, which applied for the director, is that the proper term? Is that what you're calling it? Director of the CAP Entity, and has been, I assume you have accepted that position. So.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to volunteer V.
The alternate?
The alternate.
On me?
That's okay. Unless.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry, who's going to be the actual member?
Are you still going to be the actual member?
Yeah.
I thought the resolution we had passed, or I just, we had decided the chairman would have to be V.
I don't remember that. And next year we got Dog Guys picked, huh?
Well, I mean, I'll be your alternate.
Is it, I mean, because you and I are both busy, is it property, can we have a third alternate? Can Charlie fill in for us to show out here? Is there any reason we can't do that? They don't allow for that? Okay. Well, we'll just go with that, no?
They would be able to actually vote if you had a third person.
Well, can we just have?
What about a proxy? Does it allow for proxies?
No, that conversation came up during one of their meetings, and there was some, it was an issue, I think, with Catherine County, and.
So can we have Commissioner Hall's alternate?
No, you can have your representative and one alternate.
One alternate.
Then we'll just do that, and if it doesn't work, we'll do this again.
If there's no action items on their agenda, you could have someone like Charlene come in and sit in.
She's not a voting member.
Yeah. I attend them anyway, so it's not, we would just lose a vote if one of the other.
You know, part of the problem is, is they, for some reason, they virtually insist on having them when I can't attend, and that's, that's the problem. So if you want to be the member, I would gladly let you be the member and let Charlene be the alternate. I mean, I don't mind, I don't mind going, I don't mind going, but the problem is, is for some reason that group is bound and determined to have it during bus time, and. Yeah, they moved it to 10 now. Yeah. Got it, bus at 11:30? They needed it to be at 9. I told them that every time.
So I think just maybe, well, we could use this, I guess we could cross out, why don't I, well, just, you've already got the document, just cross it out, rewrite the names, and then whoever's made the motion.
But you guys already had them picked?
Maybe amend. We just can't change you. I picked them in advance, and I. I just left yours the same. So maybe just amend the motion to reflect who you're.
What do you think, Ron?
Well, I like the chair, you know, and so I take, we ought to insist, Mr. Kateris, that in fact you try to coordinate it with our chair and then make an alternate, and that way we've got two commissioners that's going to be on there. We don't have to worry about not being able to have a vote if, in fact, we have an alternate as Ms. Webb. I think it ought to be people who can vote. It may be an important vote at the time, and I think you ought to have two people who can vote. That's my opinion.
Well, it's just that, it's, the director's going to cause that to happen.
Mr. Kateris, right?
Unless you want me to be the member.
I didn't understand what your request was. Well, I was saying, just make sure I can make the meeting.
I'm just making sure that there's two, there's two voting members, either the voting member and the alternate, and that both of them be able to vote. It may be a type of vote that we would want to be there and have a say as far as a vote is concerned. If Ms. Webb. If Ms. Webb is going to be an alternate, she's not going to be able to vote. And so I would like to see a commissioner as the one voting and the alternate.
The alternate...
The alternate is a voting member.
You guys did...
I thought you said the alternate would not be able to vote, that you wouldn't be able to vote.
No, if you're doing, you're talking about having proxies and second alternates. The JPA does not allow for that. It allows for a representative and one alternate. The alternate can vote in, I mean, because Anthony's attended in Brett's absence before, he's allowed to vote.
Okay.
It's when you were talking about proxies and second alternates. No, we're not allowed to do that under the language in the JPA. So we need one representative and one alternate.
We could certainly also potentially amend the Public Meetings Act resolution to change the time.
Well, the Public Meetings Act resolution states nine o'clock.
They changed this last meeting to 10:30.
So then I probably should be left out. I think probably ought to be, because if you can't go, then it's just not...
We could do Dave as the representative and Charlene as the...
And both of them would be able to vote.
Would that work?
Yes. Okay. That's fine.
Who made the motion?
I, I'm going to make that motion. I moved to have Commissioner Ramos as the member and Charlene, the manager, as the alternate. Can I get a second?
Sure.
There's a motion, a second. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signal five, say an aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. All right. At this time, I would take a motion to recess as the Grant County Board of Commissioners.
Don't move.
Second. All those in favor, signal five, say an aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Called to order, the Grant County Inigent Health Plan Claims Board. One item on the agenda, approve or disapprove January 11, 2016, as an, for an inigent burial certificate for Baca's Funeral Chapels.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion that we approve the January 11, 2016, inigent burial certificate for Baca's Funeral Chapel.
Second. There's a motion, a proper second, to approve January 11, 2016, for an inigent burial certificate for Baca's Funeral Chapels. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signal five, say an aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Can I get a motion to adjourn the Grant County Inigent Health Plan Claims Board?
Don't move.
Second. All those in favor, signal five, say an aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. All right, back to order, the Board of County Commissioners. At this time, we will stand for county reports, and we'll start with Mike, as usual.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and committee members. I respectfully submit my report. The reporting period is January 8 through February 4. Item number one, status remain the same. Item number two, we currently have two full, part-time opening. We have two applicants right now that are going through the back down process to fill those vacancies. Item number three, status remain the same. Item number four, on our training update, Deputy Andazola, Lieutenant Bonafont, and Officer Rodriguez. The attended session, what we're looking at, chairman and commission members, we're going to different facilities. Right now, we're going, visiting those facilities right now. And our purpose is to improve our protocols in the areas of our training curriculum, special management, youth support. I was able to contact New Mexico State Police Tactical Team, and they certified our cert members and our administrative staff. This is at no charge to the detention facility. And our gratitude goes out to the New Mexico State Police for coming down and attending and helping our agency out. Item number five, on our inmate support program, we continuously are meeting right now. The group is meeting, and we're again looking at legislation and possibility of a funding source. On our item number six, item remains the same. On our detention statistics, the average daily population for the month of January 8 through February 4 is 57, which is two more than last month. Our high population males was 57, two more than last month. High population females was eight, which that stat, that stat remained the same. For the same reporting period, we have 57 inmates booked in the facility, which is two more than last reporting period. The average length of stay in this reporting period is 27.56 days. And if you'll notice, that was quite an increase from the previous reporting period that I've given to you. And when it was, I had to get ahold of our ex-jail IT individuals, and they had, there was a glitch in the software and the way that it was being calculated. So that's why there's an increase, several day increase in our average length of stay. And I think I've put that in your packet. If you have any questions, please let me know, and I can run through that for you. On our ARC, the rest of the reporting is the ARC survey and our CJ five-day survey of inmates in confinement reports. There any questions? Okay. Item number eight, on our agency rest totals for the month of January, Silver City Police Department at 82, Grant County Sheriff's Department 21, New Mexico State Police at 14, Bearre Police Department 3, Santa Clara 8, Hardy Police at 4, New Mexico University Police at 1. The detention facility conducted 22 district court transports. Division 1 magistrate court, we had 28. Division 2, we had 4. Silver City Municipal Court, we had 1. Santa Clara, we had 2. Bearre Municipal Court, 0. During this reporting period, we had nine medical transports. And the total of transports in this reporting period is 46. Item number 10, on the jail utilization, I also broke that down for you. I think that was a request. Under that status, if you'll recall, they were all kind of lumped into one. So what I've done for you now is I broke it down to the probation violations. Currently, we have 20 individuals that are incarcerated for probation violations, 0 for parole. Probation violation inmates awaiting transport for this reporting period of 4. Total inmates charged with warrants, 28. And we have currently, might need to change that, we have two more. So now we have 11 inmates in special management. That's my report, sir.
Very much, Mike. Anthony, for your last time.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and commissioners. Your address is my last report. And I have to report that, that right now, I work on CDBG application. I ensured, Charlene, when I spoke to her about, about my resignation, that I'd make sure that this was my last and hopefully, best application. It's important to me to push Commissioner Hall's project forward. And so...
Appreciate that.
I would, I would like to say that I, of course, appreciate everything that I've, I've got from, from Grant County. I'd like to thank the residents for supporting me and my family for, for so many years. All sets of commissioners, I don't know when I first got hired on, or first got appointed as the road superintendent, it was actually, back then, it was done by the commission. So without commissioners, I would never even kind of got around that. And so I appreciate the commission and everything they do for me and for Grant County. And also, of course, the staff. I've made a lot of friends and hopefully, very few enemies in my, in my time here. And hopefully, I've been able to make a difference. And moving forward, hopefully, be able to do a good job for the CAP entity. And hopefully, we can be recognized and not just those guys that are trying to put a diversion on the Gila River and more of us have the authority to try and secure some water for Southwest New Mexico. So, anyway, thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Anthony?
Anthony, I want to thank you. I remember whenever I first got on, and we get on the block and stuff, you took me under your wing and spent a lot of extra time on me, particularly on roads and such. And I do appreciate that. And I wish you nothing but the best in your future.
I just wanted to extend congratulations to you. And I'm looking forward to working with you on the CAP agency now. And just thank you for everything you've done for us. You've, you've answered a lot of questions for me through these five years. And you've done a really good job. So we appreciate everything you've done for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
And like I said to you privately earlier, Anthony, congratulations on your appointment. And make, make Grant County proud in that new position as you have in the old position. And thanks very much for everything you've done for me, both professionally and personally through the last 30 years, or 25 years, however long it's been, we've been working together on school bus routes when you were road superintendent and everything else. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Godspeed. All right.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and commissioners. Anthony, just want to thank Anthony. I think Grant County's leaving a pretty valuable resource. And I'd like to thank him for us working together. We've known each other since both of us went to school out of cliff. And it's been a pleasure. On the doctor's side of things, there seems to be a rumor flying around and a misconception out there on Rosedale Road as far as that project. The waterline, Phase 1 part of the waterline will be complete today, and probably just a little bit of cleanup tomorrow. But I had a guy call me yesterday, and rumors flying around out there that the county is claiming intimate domain out there for the road project, which isn't true.
Yeah, we're still in property rights.
Yeah, that's what I told the guy. And actually, I'm going to meet with him today at 2 o'clock. I did go into the planning department, and Anthony got me a map, a signed map of the Declaration of the Prescriptive Easement. And it is in, in the planning department's office that anybody can come in if they have a question to take a look at. I am going to carry these with me. So if somebody has a question, I can meet with them out there and they can look at it. But I want to assure any resident out there, or anybody else as far as that, that there is no intimate domain going to be out there. That road that's there is going to be the exact same road that's there when we get done with it, except it's going to be a heck of a lot nicer than what it is. The truck bypass road, I'm a little concerned about it. I've talked to Charlene about it. They went in there and started doing the overlay. They finished the overlay on Tuesday, and they were already out there yesterday patching it. So I've met with the project engineer out there, and he made several phone calls. And I made a few phone calls myself. I've talked with Charlene. We looked over the agreement, and we're kind of stuck with what was signed by Mr. Sorry on there. But they say that they only put an inch and a half overlay. When I was trying to get them to put a thicker mat on there, and they said the feds wouldn't not give them any more money because they spent over $100,000 patching the thing, which should tell them something right there. My concern is, if that was a state highway road, it wouldn't be done the way that they have done it right now. It's going to be turned back over to the county. And I think it's going to be a maintenance nightmare is what it's going to end up being. I am going to go ahead and email the cabinet secretary up there and do a little and let him know the county's position on the thing. To me, they designated that as the, as the main detour route. Nobody went in there and tested anything that was underneath the pavement, you know, to find out if it would hold up or not. And it's pretty apparent that it didn't. And so they just went in there and put a thin overlay on it. It's going to turn it back over to us.
We can get a letter in from San Antonio Valles and also our two representatives on this issue.
I just, I just don't think it's going to hold up. I've got several, and Tom Church and all three of our representatives. And we probably would, but we must go ahead and get one or something to the speaker and to the President Pro Tem also. Just let them know that we're very displeased. We did everything, all of our part, and they're not doing their part. I did drive it the other night, Ron. You're absolutely right. The subgrade is completely falling apart. The road was never meant for that type of truck traffic. We knew it upfront. You and I have talked about it throughout the last nine or 10 months. They've been doing that job. Now, for an inch and a half overlay, it's going to end up costing the county, how about, how long is that run? That's a little over two miles. Yeah, so we're talking a couple million dollars to rehab it properly. And that's going to come out of county coffers, which we don't have. So... In hindsight, I think if we talk to that project engineer, they should have went in there and overlaid it to begin with, with that inch and a half. And then went in there after it was done and reevaluated it then. And he agreed to that. But like I said, we're kind of stuck where we're at right now, is it...
Do what we can.
Have that money.
Yep.
That road split between the two districts.
Other than that, the road department, we've been patching when we can. They called me yesterday. The plant's going to be down till next week. So as soon as it's back up, we'll be back to patching again. On their other net, we're working on the roads getting it back in shape after the last one we had. Do you have any questions?
Just don't forget that all those issues go to Commissioner Hall.
He only has the...
Only half.
You're laughing.
Only half.
And you can assure whoever's out there spreading rumor of intimate domain, that I've seen this commission now for nearly six years. And yeah, that's not, that's not really this commission's style.
So I pretty much know where the rumors coming from. And it's just been a problem since we've been out there since day one. But I will meet with that resident today and kind of feel them out. And if we have to have a public meeting, then I'll set something up to have a public meeting to reassure everybody that we're not going to go out there and take their land away from them.
Well, I'm glad all the reporters are here. Hopefully, that's their headline.
Yeah. So... I hope people look at these things. So I want to, want to make sure I show them.
Make sure we got this out.
Thank you, Ron.
Thanks, Errol. Randy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. To start real quick, the senior centers, we're going to have a Title III program assessment next week for two days. Be there with Terry and the assessment people that are coming from Santa Fe Capitality. Also, we'll do some inspections on a couple of the senior centers to see what our needs are. We did submit the ICIP for all four centers. And so we're going to meet with them March 2nd and 3rd. DWI pretty much passed her, her budget, moving forward with that. She's out of training. That's why she wasn't here today. Conference Center, moving right along. Met with Brian yesterday, the superintendent there. They've started putting up the walls already. And again, they meet Tuesday morning. They have a safety briefing. And so the commission is always welcome at those along with the county manager. Corales, you signed that as well, going forward with the electrical. Fire departments, we've had several fires since January 1. I just want to encourage the people to, you know, right now, it's just not a good time to burn anything, whether it's slash or trash is obviously illegal. We've had some of those too. But we've, I've got with the fire chiefs and went out with them and just put them out, period. So I just want to encourage people that trash burning is illegal. I know you've been doing it all your life, but it's been illegal for some time now. There's a landfill in Grant County, and that's where it needs to go. So we had a fire at the landfill with some slash burning, with some slash piles there, Christmas trees and such. That was, I think, January 17. But I wanted to thank Danny Legarita, who's the supervisor out there, was supposed to be here. And also, one of his employees, Chris Romo, who I had to get him off the lake to actually get some heavy equipment in there to give us a fire break. And he did that, then came in with a dozer and kind of spread it out for us to control it. I think without him really getting in there with that heavy equipment and giving us that fire break, we could have had a mess on our hands. So I did want to recognize him. Sorry, he's not here. Me and you guys, we had a fire in Casa Sodoli's and other burning weeds and got away from them. We had a fire in Silver Breakers, same thing. Had a, had a fire there Saturday. Got away from them. So I just encourage the public to please think about it. You know, there's weed eaters that people can use to weed eat right now. And just, just be careful. It's dry, it's warm. The winds are going to start picking up here as we get into March. I will have the Forest Service coming in March to give kind of a weather update like we do every year with Mr. Gablegate. And so we're looking forward with that. The WUI Conference, again, will be at the University, March 31 through the 2nd. Wildland Urban Interface Conference is put on by Mexican Association of Counties, along with Grant County. And Mr. Chairman, I think you are supposed to be there for one of the days where you will be getting electric in the middle. And I told him that I'd speak to you about that. Other than that, we continue to train. We are working with the Forest Service right now in Prescriber in Fort Bearre. We're just trying to get all the details together with some of the volunteers that we've been training for us moving forward. Other than that, that's all I have. One more thing is the airport. I want to talk about the fuel. I gave you guys a kind of a breakdown of the fuel costs that we have there. And if you just really go back to the last page, it'll, I'll just be pretty, pretty quick with that. If you look at the aviation fuel inventory, basically, at the very bottom there, the first is $255,000. That's what we've purchased of Jet A and Abgas. And if you look at the next line, the total sales is $327,000. So you subtract those, we've brought in about $71,000 now. Inventory there right now, we have about 8,500 in the tank right now, as far as Jet A, and about 17,000 of Abgas. We're not selling as much Abgas as we'd like, but the Jet A is, as you can see in the printout, both of these are our biggest... Booteek is our biggest invoice that we send out. Now, if you look at the dates, I was trying to get this in January, but obviously I didn't get it, so we're about halfway through the fiscal year, and we still have some outstanding invoices for this month that Booteek is still paying, which is about $1,009,000. So we're doing well. I want to thank Justin and the guys out there that are working. James Okado, who's our FBO out there, he's gone through a lot of training and, you know, it just looks like we're progressing in the right direction with this. It was tough at first, we had a lot of expenses to go through, but I think we've kind of curbed those and we've kind of got through that, and so everything is working well. Again, we're getting into the fire season now. Forest Service, the airbase out there, we'll have a plane out there. They will probably, they use more of the Abgas, so we'll probably be leasing a truck like we did last year, probably sometime late March, early April into probably end of July, so that we make sure that we have a truck available for Abgas if we end up with a fire somewhere within the region, we're going to be using the airport. Other than that, Mr. Chairman, unless you have any questions, that's my report.
Good job.
Thank you.
I was kind of shocked. I flew out that Monday morning that it was snowing straight across, and I thought to myself, I may not be all that smart to get on this plane. But you've had guys out there fueling the plane in the middle of that blizzard, and I'm like, we must have some really dedicated people. Kudos to you and your group.
Well, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, I think that rule without saying, I mean, James Okado took it upon himself, he was an employee with the Grant County at the contingency incident when he came on, that was a very good choice for us because we have an ex-military guy who worked in that area in the military, so it made it easier to train and to understand what the position was going to be in. So he has really stepped up, and so I really appreciate him. Justin has stepped up also as the airport manager, to try to make sure that, you know, we're going to be doing the runway here in April, and so there are some proof samples now, so we'll be having that done as well. And so there's a lot of activity at the airport, not as much as we'd like, but as we keep promoting and moving forward, Booteek, hopefully we'll get more. Again, they're changing their schedule again March 1st, so there's going to be some changes in times there again, so look for that on their webpage.
Do you have any idea what they're doing?
I think it's just times, pushing times forward based on, you know, their demand of when people are coming back to Silver City. I don't have it right now, but I think they're moving. They were flying in around 5:00, 5:30, they're going to push that back to like 7:00.
The morning nights were rough, and like I said, it was horrible weather. There was one empty seat, and I know whose that was, because he got scared.
That's all I have, unless you have any questions.
At the Eco Watershed Group, the subject on the Prescribed Burn came out, and I'm glad to see that you've taken upon yourself to get the training for our actual county fire departments. I'd like to see more people involved in that. I know you've got three fire departments involved right now, correct?
Right.
But that's definitely a step in the right direction. I know Leo Trujillo was happy to see that you all were going to be out there and getting trained on that type of fire. So I thank you very much for getting our county involved.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Robinson, and as just said, I don't want to use up the entire resources within Grant County in case we do have an incident within that project, but it is one of my goals is to make sure that we continue that dialogue with the other agencies, including Silver Fire. We are going to have a meeting here March 22nd, and I will be getting that over to the commission to meet with Forest Service and other agencies. So thank you very much, John, Commissioner.
We'll move on, and I see Kevin's representing the Sheriff's Department today. Mr. Flam, how are you?
I'm doing good. Chairman, Commissioners, I haven't been able to complete the statistics for the month of January, so you won't have to listen to them. At this time, we're going through the hiring process, and we have two vacant positions. We also have a deputy attending the Academy DTS in Santa Fe right now. And the main thing is, we've been extremely busy the last couple weeks, and I want to thank all of my staff for the hard work they've done, and they've been going through a lot of stress, and so we just keep plugging along. Thank you.
Thank you. I've worked with Terrazas on a part-time call, and I've met with a lot of police officers on some of these calls, and I tell you what, I've always respected your police officers, but seeing some of the stuff they have to go through, I can see the stress and understand where you're coming from when you talk about them being stressed. There's been a lot of suicides and people passing away here, especially here lately. And it really, it's very big concern for me, and I would really like to see if we can have some kind of vigil and bring our county together, hopefully bring different denominations together, and maybe have a vigil out here and say some prayers and have some prayer come over our county. It's really something to have five deaths in a five-day period, and it's actually kind of scary to me, being a parent in this county, knowing that this is going on. So again, the stress is really heavy to your police officers, and you tell them that we thank them for everything they do for us, so it's tough to be out there for those type of calls. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I agree. Whenever on Tucaso, when we did our assessments, we had the epidemiology come in and do a study of Grant County, and it was very shocking about our suicide rate per capita. And it's something that, as a community, each of us has, we need to deal with it and figure out what we need and what we can do as far as a commission and leaders in the community, and come together and see if we can't figure out what we need to do and how to do it. So if anyone has any suggestions or anything, we're open to suggestions. Call us web, and she'll direct it to us, and maybe we can come up with some thoughts and ideas. So yes, it is a concern. We're such a small community to have that many. Part of it is substance abuse, part of it is depression, there's several. I got statistics, I think it wants to see them, as far as the calls to the crisis center in Albuquerque, we're second in the state over Las Cruces on the crisis calls. And so that's very shocking.
Being a leader in the community, it just, it just all around when you see this kind of stuff happening, especially, it's not just our young kids, it's hitting our adults also, and it's very concerning. And at times like that, you catch yourself saying, what can we do as a county leader? And, you know, there's so much, so much questions that you ask yourself, and you just wonder where we headed next, and we've definitely got to do something. I know that Tucaso...
The fatalities that we had, horrific, leaving families behind and such, where alcohol was involved. You know, people talk about drugs, but alcohol is our number one problem in this county, number one of any drugs. And so it's an issue we need to deal with.
Kevin? All right. And next, we have Misty.
How are you?
How's the assessor's office?
I'm doing well. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, at this time, the assessor's office does not have a report, but we will have one next commissioners' meeting when Rowan comes back.
Thank you very much. Steve?
Good morning. You betcha. For the 2015 tax year, November through 17th of February, we've collected $3,689,000 for the county. And from the last report, it's a total of $119,000, so we're slowing down a little bit, but that time, so we still have, we're at 62%, almost 63% of the collection, so we're staying ahead of it, and hopefully the rest of the $2 million that's out there is going to be coming in before the May deadline, so.
It's May 10th. They're actually due April 10th.
And then they're delinquent on May 10th?
Maybe that's just, is a deadline for, yeah, for penalty and interest, so.
Okay. Looks like we're on track then. Any questions for the treasurer? Looks like you're all fixed, Steve. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Robert?
Thank you, Chairman. January 25th, the governor signed the primary proclamation, would sit in the motion a whole bunch of dates for us. Of course, the primary election will be June 7th, from 7:00 to 7:00. Decrations of candidacy for any office countywide, which will be county commissioners, District 3, 4, and 5, county clerk, and county treasurer, that'll be held on March 8th from 9:00 to 5:00, and that's the only day that that can be done. So if you're interested in running for office for any of those positions, please contact our office, we can go over with you, but that's the only day that you can come in and sign up for that. There is a fee when you sign up for, to run for office, it's $50 payable in cash or campaign check only. We have some dates. Last day to update any voter registrations or register to vote for the primary will be May 10th. Absentee voting begins on May 10th. We have some new cards coming out next week. Everybody getting a new voter information card from us due to the Five Man Commission. We wanted to make sure everybody gets a card with some updated information on it. It'll have your new or old information on there, depending on if you have a new district or not. So those cards will be going out next week. Look for those in the mail. If you don't get one, please contact our office so you can update your information in our office, because if you didn't get one, you probably have a bad address in our system. So we'll try to clean those up as well. Different for this election cycle, we're going to have some precincts that will be getting their ballots by mail only, and those will be the precincts of the Sapiro, the Red Rock, Mule Creek, and Hachita. We won't be sending anybody out there to set up polling locations anymore for them. We're going to get that voter turnout a little bit higher thanks to that. One more thing for our office, March 21st, 22nd, and 23rd, we will be closing our office. We will be sending, we'll be all going up to the election school the Secretary of State puts on for us, I think, at this time for this election. With the amount of candidates that will be on the ballot, I think that it's very pertinent that our office be cross-trained, and I think this is a good opportunity to start that. So all of our staff will be up there training, both on machines and administrative aspects of the election as well. Other than that, if you have any questions for me, that's all I have.
Any questions, Rowan? Thanks, Rowan, for the good work. Charlie?
Yes, I do. I do want to extend my thanks to Anthony for my, during my short time here, you've been a tremendous resource, and I have some big shoes to fill when we move towards filling the vacancy that she's left. So thank you for being such a good resource. I've been in Santa Fe a few times throughout this session. Just have to say, had some really good and productive meetings with our legislators, as well as DFA, had a couple meetings with them regarding the reimbursement process this county, you know, the municipalities, the county, not seeing reimbursements in a timely fashion. Actually, on my way home, not this last time, but the time before, actually received a phone call saying, your check's ready, can you come by and get it? So that was very productive meetings with them, and they assure us that they will do a better job in processing those. There's some communication issues going both ways, which I admitted to our faults, and hopefully we can move past that, and it'll be a smoother process in the future, hopefully. I took a look at the Capaletti report, it looks like, I feel that Grant County is sparing very well. There's an appropriation of $186,000 going towards Ron's project, and $100,000 to go to the road department for the chip spreader, and also a $341,000 appropriation for senior centers throughout the county. So...
Representative actually put the money out first.
I am still trying to track all of that down. I've got a pretty good idea at this point, but hesitant to say at this point, but I can get that information.
I'm sorry? Hate to see you sitting up wrong.
Yeah, okay. But please get us that report for next meeting, because I think the public needs to know where we're getting our monies. I know Senator Morales has helped us out a lot.
Yes, Senator Morales has been, you know, a great asset to the county. Used to that information was readily available, and, you know, several years back, suddenly that became, I don't know, top secret. But anyway, I'm working on it.
Thank you.
That's it, unless you have any questions.
Commissioner? Well, I'd just like to, you know, thank everyone for attending the legislative session and representing Grant County so well. You know, I got to make two trips up there this year, and, you know, Senator Morales is always there for us, so we really do appreciate it. I got to meet with Representative Hamilton and a little bit with Representative Zimmerman. So, you know, we've, we had a great showing out there, we had some good people going out there and lobbying for Grant County. I did get a call from Mr. Duran, the fifth grade class out of Stout, I guess they'll be here on the 18th, and they'll be meeting with, I guess, with our different elected officials offices, and they did ask if I could be here about 11:30 to kind of give them a runaround in the main offices here. So if you all want to show up, that'd be great.
18th of March?
I'm sorry, the 18th of next month.
Today's 18th.
18th of March, I'm sorry.
I get to talk to them, the class, sometime this next month.
You know, something that I would really like to see us start working on is bringing together Baird Hurley in Santa Clara and looking at maybe an ambulance emergency building in the mining district. That'd be something that's really needed. They do house an ambulance over in that area, and Baird's been kind enough to let them use the old fire station facility to stay if they want to rest or what have you. But it's time that we actually really start looking at putting some kind of a tri-city ambulance service there, because most of their calls are actually being handled by that ambulance service out there, or a high majority of their calls. So I'm personally glad to see them in the mining district, because whenever they have to, whenever they get a call and ambulance has to travel all the way from Silver City, say to Hurley, that's, you know, that's a critical 15, 20 minutes. And now it's down to about five minutes from Baird, so that's great. And Hurley, just an example, so if they have to go all the way to the main bridge, they're, you know, they're a lot closer than having to take off from Silver City. So I would really like to see if we can get some kind of communication with the tri-city, see if we can put some kind of a building together, see if we can find funds somewhere to help either Baird, Santa Clara, or find the best location for this ambulance service. I, we did have a county commission alliance meeting last week. We, it was really good, we talked about different problems that our joining counties have, and they're very similar, especially when it comes to jails. You know, I did extend a hand after communicating with Charlene about extending our hand to Sierra County, they're without a jail right now. We're actually the closest county to them, and extended our hand to them, see if we could house some of their prisoners, and hopefully that'll help us here as a county to bring in a little bit of revenue at the same time. So it's a win-win, I think, for both Grant and Sierra County. So I did extend our hand to them. I'd like to see us drop some kind of letter and extend it formally. And we did have an Eco Watershed meeting. We did discuss the fluid waters again, that's really a hot, hot subject, and we've gone as far as inviting Hurley, Baird, and Santa Clara to our next Eco Watershed meeting. Hopefully, we can open talks there and see what we can do with that 600,000 gallons of water that's being pumped into the tailings every day. You know, I made a joke, coming from Santa Fe, coming into Hurley, and before we landed, if you look down, there's one heck of a reservoir down there with our 600,000 gallons of water going into those tailings every single day. If you look down before you land, that body of water is huge. And I'm ashamed to say that that's all water that's being contaminated by going into the tailings whenever it's already going through a purification system in Baird. You know, we went as far as creating a state of emergency about three years ago, putting resolutions together, and tried to, we tried to open people's eyes on getting something done with that, with those affluent waters, and no one seemed to listen over in the Baird area. So we really want to get them involved and try and get something done. Together, I think we can, we can move mountains by ourselves, and without their support, we can't do anything with that. So, you know, we really need to come together as a community and do something. I know one of our studies, when we first, when I first came on as a county commissioner, we had a shoemaker out of Albuquerque do a study for us, and they... we had a shoemaker out of Albuquerque do a study for us, and they stated that if we were to start putting that affluent waters back into our aquifer, we're looking at about a hundred and twenty years of water left in this area, in that area, versus forty to fifty years of water left in that area. So, you know, this is real crucial to us, this is real crucial to our county, and it's something that we really need to do, we really need to come together and really work together to come up with some kind of compromise and utilize those waters and put them back into our aquifer. That's pretty much all I've got.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Hall?
Thank you. Report on this past month, I was fortunate enough to be at a meeting at Western Medical University on the eighteenth of January, where our detention center administrator, Mike Arriero, was recognized at the Martin Luther King Junior event, as he was inducted into the Hall of Fame, and congratulations to him. It's always nice to see our officials and people, employees from the county to be recognized, and so, good job, Mike. Then, on the nineteenth through the twenty-first, attended the NMAC board meeting in Santa Fe on legislative matters, where we went through a lot of different, some legislation that was being proposed and stuff, and worked on what our priorities were and addressed those along with the manager Webb and other Tucasa board members. We also toured a Santa Fe Recovery Center, of which we were very impressed with, and looking at it as some things that maybe we could think about as far as Tucasa is concerned. Also met with DFA, the local government division, Mr. Lopez at length, along with Priscilla Lucero Cog, in reference to a CDBG grant for Tucasa, and it's looking very good. And I want to thank Ms. Webb for her diligence and staying on top of that and recognizing and finding it, because it's going to be a sizable amount of money if, in fact, we get it, and we're very close to getting that. Speaking of that, one of the things they're asking for, and I asked for the support of the public, is that they have asked for letters of support, and we've already got quite a few, and I want to thank elected officials for starting that, and I've got the address that you need to address it to, it needs to be turned in here, plus a Tucasa milestone report about where we are and what it's all about. So if you want that, we have some of those forms and the addresses at the front office of the county building. Then on the second and third, also attended the Grant County Prospectors Event in Santa Fe, and very, very impressive, very well organized, and we're very fortunate to have the prospectors representing us. Ms. Webb and I both were there, where we talked about different projects and to our legislators and stuff, and also we discussed these issues with the state government, and this is part of what Charlene had referred to about talking to DFA and also the local government division. I just can't tell you the amount of support that we've had, not only in Tucasa, but other things I've been working on with Senator Morales, and also while I was in Santa Fe, along with the other legislators also, they were present during the Prospectors Event. Then on the fifth and sixth, we attended a, I attended a RMAC, NMAC Board of Directors meeting in Santa Fe. There we addressed the issues and different things that are happening in the state and some legislation that was going on, and I want to thank the elected officials of this county. I was wondering you stand by calling you back and forth and getting your opinion on how you stand on different issues and stuff, and I appreciate the response I got, because some of it was really short notice, and I got support on that and was able to pass it on at the meeting. Also on the fifteenth, attended a board meeting with the Juvenile Justice and Livelihood Committee, which I'm a board member, and we will be having then another meeting here this month, where we got the executive board coming in to Grant County, and we'll be having a meeting at the, here in Grant County, where is it?
Volunteer.
The Volunteer Center. And with that, I just, I want to see anything else I want to talk about. I think that pretty much does it, just kind of a update on Tucasa, we're looking really good, we're in the midst of forming some agreements with our HMS, which is our provider for that, and putting things together, also working with the town of Silver City as far as an agreement with them on the site, which is going to be off of the alternate thirty-two, thirty-two, Thirty-second Street, alternate, behind the last state building there, we've got four acres, and we're working together now to put an agreement together on that. So coming close, the first quarter of seventeen, we should be opening the doors, so we're pretty excited about it, so, that's it.
Thanks, Commissioner. Well, I have to say, this was probably the easiest session we've had in Santa Fe, I didn't have to go but once. We only had one bill that was really of importance, House Bill Two Thirty-three, and for some reason, it got stuck in the actual author's committee and never could make it out, so that was good. Thank the legislators for our capital outlay, Tucasa and our chip spreader, I'm sure Earl's excited, it's going to be fun, we'll have to come play with it, chip seals something. So elections are coming up, the dates to register, March eighth, did you mention that? Isn't that right?
Last week, the register is May tenth, signup day is March eighth.
Oh, okay, March eighth signup day, okay, and that's to vote is May tenth.
May tenth is.
Yeah, to register to run.
Is March eighth.
March eighth, yeah. So I encourage everybody to think hard, get deep in your heart and think about it, it's, most of the time, it's rewarding, sometimes it's not, but most of the time it is. And other than that, we have a few changes on meeting dates. Commissioner Hall needs some changes in May. The seventeenth and nineteenth will not work for him, we need to check with you and see, Gabe, if the tenth and twelfth or the twenty-fourth and twenty-sixth are better, do you have? I know you're going to have some baseball in there, and I bet you the tenth and twelfth are going to be maybe state.
Yes, and I was kind of thinking.
Twenty-fourth and twenty-sixth are the last week of school, they probably.
You know, twenty-fourth and twenty-sixth, that'll be when state is, that weekend, so.
So you want to go to tenth and twelfth?
Yeah, tenth and twelfth would probably be good.
So change your calendars on May to the tenth and the twelfth, and then in July, I won't be here the nineteenth and twenty-first, and I don't care if we do the twelfth and fourteenth or the twenty-sixth and twenty-eighth.
Both of those are open for me. Uh, twelfth, fourteenth, sounds good.
Is that okay with you? Charlene?
Pardon? Say the July dates again, I'm sorry.
Twelfth and fourteenth. Make sure it's not rodeo somewhere.
I'm okay with it.
All right. So I know we just got through publishing these, but we'll publish them again. So we are going to go into executive session in accordance with NMSA nineteen seventy-eight ten fifteen one H two, so does anybody have anything else to say before we do that? Okay, and I would take a motion.
Second.
All those in favor, say five and say an aye.
Aye.
Rob, would you do a roll call?
Commissioner Robinson, are you aware that you will be entering into executive session?
Yes, I am.
Chairman Caston, are you aware that you will be entering into executive session?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Hall, are you aware that you will be entering into executive session?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much, Rob. The only thing we will discuss today is the county manager's goals and expectations, and we will adjourn from the executive session. We are now in executive session.